Any Planning Commission to order? I do need to ask a few questions of the members of the Board who are here. Has anyone had any ex parte communication concerning any of the cases with any of the applicants or their agents? Mr. Schwing.
No, no.
Mr. Santas?
No.
Mr. Frollick?
No.
And I haven't had any. Does anyone have a conflict of interest with any of the cases we have coming before us today?
No.
Okay. Very good. With that said, I don't have our Code of Ethics in front of me. It's been a crazy day in my life. But we will turn it over to Mr. Baker for our first case and/or to introduce new staff. Yes, your microphone.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Zachary Baker, Planning and Development Services. I'll take the easy bit first, if you don't mind. We do have two new staff members that are here today. We've got our Planner One, Mr. Michael Graves, over sitting next to Mr. Brian Helms. Behind me, I've got Jennifer Gazelle, the new Planner Two. So she's going to be helping me out today. It's her first public hearing, so go lightly on her, if you don't mind. Before I get into the staff report and the presentation, Madam Chair, may I approach and hand out some revised staff reports?
Absolutely.
I did bring seven. I've got enough for the five of you, the Board Attorney and our Scrivener.
The Reporting Secretary.
If you don't mind, I'm going to hold on to one to walk you all through the staff report.
Certainly. You may keep mine.
May I?
Yes.
So?
Thank you, Zachary.
I'm sorry, sir. I'm just setting up my desk. I'm just getting my chair. I'm just having a little meeting.
So, some very minor revisions to the staff report that's already been presented to you in your application or in your packets, excuse me, last week. So the first one, there's a few here. Page four, item two, I took the liberty to highlight those things that we added as to not make it confusing with the strike-through underline that's already going on with this. So, item two, this is the staff's analysis for justifying the change. So the change that is item two was already in the document that you had received in the proposed text modification. I went ahead and added it to the actual staff report and the analysis so that there was some continuity there. The large paragraphs that are down at the bottom, and I'll get to why, but there's, within the original text that we have for the type three subdivisions, it was limited to six lots. And we have a provision in our Land Development Code that states, whenever there's a new development resulting in more than 10 lots, that would require paved roads. Type three family subdivisions do not require paved roads. So in order to be consistent with other portions of the Land Development Code, it was staff's suggestion to go ahead and increase the number of possible lots from the type three family subdivision from six to 10. So there's still safeguards in place that would prevent the proliferation of more than 10 lots. We're keeping the requirement that you can only do two type three subdivisions. And what that does is really, it guarantees whenever there's generational ownership, where, right, a father might own the property and he split it for his three sons, and then those three sons grow up and they have kids of their own. Now grandfather wants to split off more land for his grandchildren. So two applications, a total of 10 lots. If they're ever, they will never be allowed to be exceeded beyond that.
Did we have the two separate splits before?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So the two type three applications has always been in effect. We're keeping that. We're just giving them the ability to now do 10 lots instead of six for those big families. Page five of the document that I handed out, these are really some Scrivener errors. So we struck through agricultural two. That is no longer a future land use from the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element. Did away with that altogether. And item one, that's where you can see we go from six to 10. Item three, we've added stepchild. Stepchild was added because within Comp Plan Policy A193B3, the family density exception, we would allow a family density exception for a stepchild.
Right.
So it just wasn't listed in the text governing the type three family subdivisions. I think that's it. I'll just flip through real quick to make sure. Yep, that's it.
Would you take us through your staff report now?
The entire staff report?
Was that your staff report?
That was, that's the text of the staff report. I still have a whole presentation.
Okay, your presentation's what we need, yes.
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
Okay.
So this is an application for a Land Development Code text amendment, case number The application is by Jenna Stone and Deana Morris, acting as agent for the applicant James Morris, requesting an amendment to the text of the Putnam County Land Development Code, Chapter 45, Article 12, Administration and Enforcement, Division 8, Procedures for Review of Subdivisions, Section 45, 1036. In addition, it's the modification to Article 12, Administration and Enforcement, Division 9, Procedure for Obtaining a Lot Split, Section 45, 1052. So with the Putnam County Land Development Code, it identifies five classifications of the division of land. You've got your type one, platted subdivisions, your standard, paved roads, streetlights, you know, sidewalks, the works, HOAs. Type two subdivisions is limited to large lots resulting in a gross density of one unit per 10 acres. You've got your type three family subdivisions, which we can dive into a little deeper throughout the presentation. You've got an exempt subdivision, which is where you move boundary lines between two adjacent property owners. And then you have a lot split, where you take one parcel of land and you divide it into two. Land Development Code, Section 45, 1036, provides standards for your type three family subdivision. In general, they're only permitted within the agricultural future land use designation and within the ag zoning district. Type three family subdivisions must meet the density of the future land use category, agriculture, or provide a qualifying residential density exception for immediate family members in order to qualify. The applicants are requesting to remove the 10-year requirement for a type three family subdivision in order to allow property owners who have not owned the property for 10 years some type of relief in order to establish a family subdivision. Staff has had numerous requests in the past and was tasked with reviewing this portion of the Land Development Code during the initial phase of the LDC rewrite. However, staff did not initiate the proposed amendment. Rather, we worked with the applicants on the proposed text change. Pursuant to Division 9, the Procedures of a Lot Split, Section 45, 1052B, Standards and Restrictions, further division of a parcel created by a lot split is restricted unless a type one subdivision is approved. Many lots have been created from large parent parcels through the Putnam County Lot Split Procedure that are restricted to further division unless a type one platted subdivision is approved. A lot split is defined as the division of one parcel into two parcels and is an administrative process. Once the lot split has occurred, it is restricted to further division unless through the type one platted and recorded subdivision, which requires DRC review, Planning Commission, Board of County Commissioners for the preliminary plat. And you go back and you do the same thing for the final plat, and it's timely. Family subdivisions only apply to immediate family members of the property owners as defined in Section 45, 1036.3. The proposed amendment would allow type three family subdivisions, as well as type two large lot subdivisions, to be included in the restrictions. Type two and three subdivisions are administrative and are not required to go through the plating process. If approved, this amendment will serve all qualifying properties within the unincorporated portion of Putnam County. So in summary here, what we're trying to do is loosen the restrictions on the type three family subdivision while still maintaining the intent of what that type three family subdivision is for, giving, affording property owners the ability to provide pieces of land to more family members so they don't have to pick and choose if it's a large family. And also getting rid of that 10-year ownership requirement. It's imperative for new families that decide to move to Putnam County, buy up 50 acres, you know, and they want to establish a family subdivision. Right now, they're limited. They can't move forward with their request and their dream to have the family all on one property. We attempt to ensure that we won't have a proliferation of illegal subdivisions by requiring the property to be owned for three years after the division has occurred. And we can get into that a little bit, too. It's in the forthcoming slides of the PowerPoint. So here we have the LDC Section 45, 1036. This is the Land Development Code section that governs type three subdivisions. And if I may, I'm just going to kind of touch on the changes that are proposed here. So as previously discussed, striking or agriculture two, again, it's no longer relevant. We don't have that future land use. Striking six, replacing it with 10 so that we can be consistent with our roadway and access standards within the Putnam County Land Development Code. That's Section 45-617, and cited within that revised staff report I passed out. A little further down in Section 3, again, that's where we have the inclusion of stepchildren. Section 4 is where we get to the fun stuff. This is where we're striking completely. The land has to be held by the current owner or a member of the owner's family for at least 10 years. The next one, because we struck number four entirely, the only thing changing is it's going from number five of the original code to number four of the proposed code. This slide, we have no changes other than the numbering. So six is going to five. What was seven is going to now six. And I'm going to back up, and I just want to run us through existing subsection 6, proposed subsection 5, which states, "All new lots created through the family subdivision shall have frontage on a county-maintained road if available. If county-maintained road is not available, each new lot created must be accessed at a minimum by a recorded 66-foot wide easement." Excuse me. "The easement must connect the created lots with the public road or private road. In the case of connecting to a private road, the applicant must provide documentation that they have the right to access that private road." So this ties back with the number of lots increasing up to 10. So 45, 617 simply states that for residential, new residential developments resulting in more than 10 units on the parent parcel, you have to pave the roads to current roadway standards. So since this section within the type three family subdivision is allowing a 66-foot wide easement, which may or may not be paved, we want to make it consistent with that 617. And here, nothing's changing on this slide either, except the existing code was numbered eight, the proposed code would be numbered seven. Finally, this is the safeguard, the three-year ownership kind of clause. So, and I'll read this in its entirety. "The sale of any parcel created by a type three subdivision is prohibited for three years from the date the parcel was created if the parcel remains vacant. If a sale takes place on any parcel within the type three subdivision prior to three years from the date of its creation, all lots within the type three subdivision will be required to comply with the requirements of a type one platted subdivision within 90 days of that sale. If the parcel is developed with a single-family dwelling and a certificate of occupancy has been issued to the individuals named on the type three family subdivision application, no prohibition for its sale would be required." Special circumstances could permit the sale of the parcel if either the transfer of the parcel to the owner's estate upon death, either through test date or end state succession as provided by state law, or transfer of the parcel to an immediate family member of the owner's, or an immediate family member of the owner of the parent parcel on the original type three subdivision application, or involuntary transfer of the parcel arising out of a judgment or order entered against the owner and rendered by a court of competent jurisdiction, or a relocation due to unemployment or educational opportunity, provided that the relocation would require the owner to move his or her permanent residence as defined by Florida statutes. So these special circumstances were actually taken from an adjacent jurisdiction, kind of to mirror what they're doing. I'll leave that for now. Here we have the proposed revisions to Land Development Code, Section 45, 1052, the standards and restrictions for a lot split. The modification here is in subsection B, and we are adding, so I'll just read it in its entirety. "No further division of a parcel created by a lot split shall be permitted under this section unless one of the listed subdivisions in Article 12, Division 8, is approved by staff, or a type one subdivision is approved by the Board of County Commissioners." Those subdivisions listed in Article 12, Division 8 would be type one, type two, type three. So your platted subdivision, your large lot, or your family subdivisions. All that said, staff is recommending to the Planning Commission that you recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners to amend Section 45, 1036, requirements for type three subdivisions as provided by staff, and to approve the amendment to LDC Section 45, 1052, as proposed by the applicants. And that is the text revisions that we just went through.
Are there any questions of staff? Mr. Hancock, you've had one?
Yeah, I was just wondering how you came up with a four years.
Microphone.
I was curious to how you came up with a three-year.
So, three years sounded good, ultimately, right? I'll be honest with you. So the whole intent here is, we want to prevent a...
I was thinking more like five, but that was just me.
We can discuss, I mean, if you'd like. The intent here is to prevent a developer, a home building company, Lennar, D.R. Horton, from coming in, buying the property, putting it in the CEO's name, that CEO cutting it out, giving it, you know, putting it in his brother's name.
Exactly.
And building, and then selling, or leaving them vacant and trying to sell them off. So the goal is to make it easy for people to do it that haven't owned the property for 10 years. I know other jurisdictions do five years, they do seven years. We went with three years, thinking it'd be a little more palatable for Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay.
Mr. Hancock, are you thinking that that would offset the 10 years?
Yeah. So I was just saying five. I thought that was a good, I don't know. But, I mean, I'm not trying to restrict anyone, but I can see exactly what you said happening.
Is there a minimum lot size for the parent parcel?
No, ma'am. The minimum lot size for the parent parcel is not in consideration. It just has to be a legal lot of record.
All right. What are we doing with the density requirements that are outlined in the Comprehensive Plan?
Yes, ma'am. So right now, I could own an eight-acre parcel, and I can do a family subdivision with a family density exception, and deed off five one-acre parcels to my family members and retain the other three acres for myself. So it's pretty much the same thing.
Is that in any land development, in land use code, land use area?
What do you mean?
We have certain density requirements in different, this is only agriculture, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. So it's only in agriculture. Our residential density is, it ranges from one dwelling unit per five acres to one dwelling unit per 20 acres.
Correct.
With Comprehensive Plan Policy A193B3, your family density exception would allow you to increase the residential density for the agriculture, conservation, and rural residential future land uses, so long as the parcel adheres to the minimum lot size of the zoning district. Which, for type three subdivisions, they can only occur in the agriculture zoning district, and they would be limited to one acre. So as...
But yet we have a one-in-five density.
That would be by right, so...
By right? So this is, so we're going to make this a one-in-one by right by changing this Land Development Code?
It wouldn't necessarily be by right. They would still have to apply for the family density exception, which is something that we already have in place. And then they would have to apply for the type three family subdivision, which is something we already have in place. We're just trying to improve it.
And those are all administrative. Nothing goes before either this body or the Board of County Commissioners.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
So there's no requirement that for a consideration of something outside of what's normally stated there to be handled as a variance?
No, ma'am. We wouldn't vary the lot size less than what the zoning district would allow for.
Ag zoning is one acre.
Right.
Well, this is one acre, what is proposed?
But the ag land use is one in five.
Ag zoning, I said, is one acre minimum lot size.
And you're correct. The ag land use, the minimum that we would have is one in five. However, we already have the family member density exception in place. It's used a lot every year. And people can increase their residential density down to one unit per acre in the ag zoning district.
That's in the current code?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that part of the code being looked at now, or...
Well, that would be the Comprehensive Plan. That would allow for that density increase.
Right, okay. The density, yes. Okay. I'm concerned that this is something that we're taking out of context, like we've said before, and not seeing the whole picture of subdivisions in the Land Development Code. We're just doing one thing. But that's my concern. And I'm concerned about taking away the 10-year vesting period and replacing it with a three-year minimum that you can't sell unless you do this, this, or this. That concerns me.
Okay, so if I can respond, the Planning Commission does have the liberty to modify what's been presented to you today. And I mean, if, for example, you own a piece of property in Putnam County, you come into some money and you want to do a family subdivision, and you buy land, you would have to wait 10 years under our current code. Even though you've been a member and a resident of the community, your vesting of ownership from prior properties wouldn't transfer. So we're really trying to make this easy for those folks that, you know, go away to college, come back, get some land... college, come back, get some land, and they want to do a family subdivision for perhaps their brothers, or whatever the case may be, or they are deployed in the military and come back with their signing bonus and want to lock in a piece of land and cut it up for their brothers, their children.
Thoughts?
I actually don't see anything wrong with the thing that you tried to describe with the home builders, putting it in their CEO, and then putting it into the kids or whatever. The vacant lots would stop them from doing anything, but if they put a house on it, they can do whatever they want to.
Yeah, and so, the idea was, once there's a house there, and it's a viable piece of property that people can live in, and it's been vetted, and building permits have been issued, and well in septic, or water in sewers there, then why stop another family from acquiring that property?
I concur completely with you, I don't see any reason to stop anybody from doing that. I mean, if I have fifty acres, as you wanted to say, and let's say I've got nine kids, I can make nine lots of one acre, and me keep the balance for my house, and let my kids and our grandkids play on their one acre. I don't see anything wrong with that either.
That's correct, and it's important to note, too, that the one acre isn't a given, they don't have to exceed the residential density of the ag land use, it's just an opportunity for those folks that may own a smaller parent parcel, twelve acres, and they want to give as many relatives a piece of property as possible.
So by what standards, then, would staff administratively decide yes or no on something? Are there objective, clear-cut guidelines, or does staff have to make a subjective decision?
No, there are clear-cut guidelines, there is an affidavit that has to be completed by the applicant, they have to name those individuals that are their family as recipients of the property, and we have to verify that it is a family member. Once the application is taken in, they would still have to provide a survey showing the entire parent parcel and the proposed divisions. Those proposed lots would have to adhere to the zoning district dimensional requirements and/or density, unless the density exception is also filed.
I guess it's that density exception that hangs me up.
Okay.
I don't want staff to get into a situation where you're put on the spot to make a judgment call.
So, we do it...
You do it all the time.
Do it every week. I couldn't tell you, truthfully, how many type-three family subdivisions we've looked at this year, but I can tell you, it's probably been about twenty lot splits with a family density exception.
You're hung up on one acre, is that what you...
No, I'm hung up on the lot density exception, being something that doesn't have to go through zoning board of adjustment for some sort of a variance.
Well, in our county, we have, I'd be afraid to count how many lots we have that are an acre or less.
Well, I realize that, that's not where I'm going, I'm going with this, is these individual situations that come up to density exceptions. Yes, you've got input criteria, you have the affidavit, you have the survey, you have the verification of family legitimacy. But what objective guidelines do you have to say yes or no against, other than, do they check all the boxes, they get it?
I mean, essentially, that's it, but, so, we also have the lot inquiry application, where staff is able to vet the property to determine if it is even eligible for one of these splits or divisions of land. Within those lot inquiries, we establish the rules, the guidelines, we give them the policies, we give them the applications, I mean, we spell out very clearly what is and is not allowed, then they are required to establish a pre-application meeting with staff to come in and discuss what they're wanting to do, we make it very clear to everybody what the outcome would be, and yeah, I mean, as long as they provide us a survey that meets, checks off by planning, property appraiser, Public Works, and the Florida Department of Health, and they pay us the review fee, we issue an approval, and they go cut deeds for their new one-acre lot and convey it to their son.
So, there's really no exception to the lot density requirement, they get what they want without exception?
Well, they have to make application.
If they make the application properly. I guess that's the term that bothers me, I don't know. Anyhow, I won't take any more time with that. Any other questions of staff? Is the applicant here, would you like to speak for or against? Would you like to come up and speak and present your...
Hi, good afternoon, thank you for your time, Deana Morris, thank you for your time and consideration. My father's here, we are seeking these amendments so that we can build on his property, this is something that's been a...
Yes, please, yeah, go ahead.
Deana Morris, 141 Ranch Road, East Palaca. And we are just, this has been a longstanding dream of the family, to be together, so we recently relocated here, have just fallen in love with the county, and we want to be able to, just, my sister and I build homes next to our parents, to be with them during their, you know, aging years, and just have our families all together.
What is the size of the parcel, the total parcel?
Sixteen acres.
Sixteen? Okay. All righty. Anything else you would like to share with us? We read your letter.
Thank you. Nope, that was it.
No, it was perfect.
Thank you.
We appreciate you taking the time to pin that.
And I appreciate you reading it, thank you for your time.
Anything else you would like to share with us?
Madam Chair, may I ask a question while the applicants...
Certainly.
So, if the applicants are cool with it, and staff is okay, if you all want to impose that five-year requirement after the split is done, just food for thought, I don't know if it would affect them.
I don't see any...
No problem.
We're fine with five years.
You're planning on staying?
We're staying, we're staying.
We're here, we want to stay, we want to stay.
We want to be here.
Let us stay.
You're going to build, you're building right now, correct? I mean, as soon as we do it?
No, we have to survey the property.
Well, that's right now.
We're going to get the approval, I hope, before we...
Yeah, we're going through this.
Yes, we're wanting, my kids are already enrolled in school.
The five-year and three-year stuff is only for vacant land, it's not for houses. That's exactly what it is, I mean, that's, it's for vacant land.
With the inclusion of those four clauses where we could permit a conveyance, but yes, sir?
Yes.
But that's something we've, you're adding in, is the three years for vacant land?
Correct.
Right, for vacant land only.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I understand. If you don't build on it for vacant, if you don't build on it or establish it, then you have to hold it for three years before you can do something with it, that's what you're saying.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds very reasonable to me. I mean, most family people are going to be immediate, I mean, they're not, they're probably not planning on doing this in twenty-five years, I mean...
We would already be building if we had the approval.
Chris, what were you going to say?
I'm just sitting here thinking, I mean, there's so many scenarios you can come up with, on how to get through the system, and that's what we're here to try and prevent, that's what it comes down to.
Right.
I understand what they want, and I have no problems.
We're happy you want to be in Putnam County.
My concern is, is you get a developer in here, and he sits there, and he says, okay, I'm going to give it to all my grandkids and my kids, and then you take it and you divide it out, you get ten parcels, okay? And then, three years down the road, this one says, okay, I'm going to sell this, I don't want it really, didn't really want it to start with, I'm just waiting my three years so I can get my money. That's my concern, just, and then you end up with parcels of land everywhere. So, I'm okay, I mean, I, that's why I was saying five years, I think that you ought to make it longer, make it more stringent a little bit, from that standpoint.
I can, too. And it's not anything that we feel toward you, but this is something that would be, you know, in stone, until it's amended again, and it applies to everyone who would apply for a family subdivision, so the fact that it's coming before us as a text amendment to the land development code is why we're beating this thing around the bush. So... At this point, I would thank you for being here, and please know that if you have any questions, Mr. Baker's office is always open. Thank you so much. At this point, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'm not sure if there's anybody else in the audience that wanted to speak in favor.
Was there anyone else who would like to speak for or against this? Thank you, Beth Sag. At this point, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and/or motion and discussion.
Getting it together.
Okay, we'll give you a minute.
All right, I think it's, the only thing that I would like to see is it changed to five years.
Okay.
That's, and I would...
It must be held for, vacant land must be held for five years?
Trying to find out the paragraph so I could make the right motion here.
Where is it, the three to five?
Try to help you out.
I don't have the papers, so I can't help you out.
I found it in the staff stuff, but...
Number eight.
Page six.
Number eight.
This one, number eight, okay.
Page five.
Yes, sir.
Number eight.
All right. Madam Chair, I recommend approval of LDC 23-000003, with the exception of, or to change item eight to five years.
I'll second. For selling the vacant land.
For selling the vacant land, yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a proper motion and second, that we approve this case as presented with the exception that the holding period for vacant land be increased from three years to five years. Any discussion, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The chair votes aye. Next, we have two co-joined cases, so to speak, we have CPA 23-000002, and then REZ 23-7. So, Jennifer, you're going to be presenting these? Okey-dokey.
Question, when is the Board of County Commissioners here?
The Board of County Commissioners meeting that will consider this will be November 28th, will be held in this chamber, and we don't have a time certain on that hearing, yet, do we?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
We don't have a time certain for the November 28th hearing?
No, ma'am.
Okay. It will be advertised, and I, you can check with Mr. Baker, and he can certainly let you know when that's going to be. Okay, all of our hearings are, okay, thank you.
But as a note as well, because this is a text amendment, there will not be a final determination made on November 28th, the state statute 125.665B requires two hearings.
Two readings of the, yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okey-dokey. All righty, Ms. Jennifer.
For the record, my name is Jennifer Gazal, I'm Planner 2, presenting the small-scale map amendment CPA 23-000002, along with the rezon, REZ 23-000007. The application is to amend the future land use map from royal residential to commercial. There is a companion application request in the rezon of the zoning map from residential 2, R2, to commercial neighborhood C1. The applicants are Jeffrey and Deanne Hardson, husband and wife. The subject property is located at the intersection of County Road 315 North and Main Drive, a 911 address has not yet been assigned. The parcel identification number is 34-09-24-8630-0000-0960. The subject parcel is approximately 2.49 acres, the future land use is commercial, and the zoning is residential R2 to commercial neighborhood C1. Their proposal is to amend the land use classification and the zoning map to allow for a commercial retail store. The 2.49 acre subject parcel is undeveloped with one commercial C1 parcel located directly southeast across Main Drive. The parcel comprises of lots 96 through 106 of the Silver Lake Estate subdivision, Mapbook 4, page 62, recorded on December 2nd, 1960. The parcel has approximately 500 feet of frontage on County Road 315, and approximately 230 feet of frontage on Main Drive. An unimproved platted right-of-way sunflower is located along the northeast boundary of the subject parcel. The Royal Residential Future Land Use designation only allows for residential development or neighborhood, commercial through an approved planned unit development. The parcel has existed as a vacant lot for several years. Upon a site visit to this parcel, it appears to be used as an ATV riding area for the local residents. This is shown in aerial view. Our zoning, future land use, and our proposed site plan. The current Royal Residential Future Land Use map designation does not allow for commercial uses unless approved through a planned unit development. Pursuant to LDC Section 45221A, the purpose of a PUD is to provide a method for landowners or developers to submit a, to submit unique proposals which may not be provided for, or allowed in other zoning districts otherwise established by this code. The proposed use is allowed in the commercial neighborhood C1 zoning district. Their proposed future land use map amendment and rezoning are compatible with the surrounding uses and would not be incompatible with the future land use designations and zoning designation within the surrounding area. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the future land use map from royal residential to commercial, and staff also recommends approval of the rezoning from residential 2, R2, to commercial neighborhood C1. Questions?
Questions, you have a staff?
I got a comment.
Okay, what was your comment?
It's about time, they rezoned it to get it in compliance with what they've been doing for years.
Okay.
They've been selling stuff from there for years.
On the corner?
Corner, yes.
Yard sales.
Yes. Yes. Do we have a copy of that plat, that site plan that you showed us in our packet? You, that, that one, do we have a copy of that in our plan, in our packet?
I'm not sure that one is included in the staff reports.
No.
I don't think so. My biggest concern is terrain. Uh, I know there's a, some sort of a topographical representation in our packet. Uh, but that land, once you get past setback, once you get past right-of-way and setbacks, there's very little land that's on a flat surface. It's down in a gully.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we, we noted that when we went out and placed signs on the property. It's a good 20-foot lower than the right-of-way adjacent.
I, I think that, that topographical representation that we had not only was directionally not right, but doesn't show that drop-off at all. So, I'm just wondering about the viability of building in that gully.
I'm sure they would probably bring dirt on.
Lots of dirt.
Yeah, I mean, they would, but that's, that's the developer's-
That's not our problem. I realize that, but I just want to, it doesn't look like there's much, much land left once you get through with setbacks and, and right-of-way and, and everything else. Plus, you've got ingress, egress, and parking areas, so, um, just my comments.
According to this diagram that we're looking at now, it looks like it's only covering half the property.
Yep.
And as far as building, that's not a problem. I do that all the time.
Well, my building experience differs with your opinion of that. You had a comment, mister, oh, you've just, you made your comment, okay. So, that, that's my concern is, is that you've got a very precipitous drop-off there and you've got, um, it'll be difficult to get ingress and egress in there off of State Road 315 with that, that drop-off, so, but, um,
I think-
That's your problem.
The parcel, though, is, is, uh, I think it's ideally suited for what they're wanting to do.
Right, the parcel itself is-
It improved the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Instead of having ATV riding around all the time.
Yeah, it certainly could do that. But it just looks a little odd for viability, but that's my opinion.
Can be a long and narrow Dollar General.
Uh, you were here during that period. Is the applicant or the applicant's agent here? Would you like to speak? Come on forward and tell us your name and address and, and talk to us about this so we can understand it a little bit better.
You've got a big map.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the planning zone.
It, it's, it's that way. You don't have to hold it or, yeah, mhm.
It doesn't want to comply with the tall guy here. My name is Jerry Didenbach. I am Vice President of CHW Professional Consultants. I'm a professional land use planner. Been here before you, before. I, I really like coming here because you all really pick out all the details. I think what you did for the family over here was great. In fact, giving them the ability to live together and age together gracefully. And I like your idea about not doing it for three years. Flipping, yeah, yeah. So, we do have a brief presentation, and if we can get switched over to this one. Oh. The public. F5. Okay, so, uh, in the interest of brevity, I will love-
And you're going to leave a copy of your electronic file with, with the screen?
Yeah, yeah, we'll leave it on the laptop, absolutely.
Okay.
In the interest of brevity, we put both the comp plan amendment and the rezoning together so we can talk about that. And, um, staff's presentation was right on target with this. This is an area where we are requesting to place a commercial use across the street from another commercial property and out on the county road. So, over the last several months, we've been working with your staff to put together the application materials, get things ready for their final staff review and staff report, and are here before you today. This, of course, as a land use and zoning change, has to go to the County Commission for Final Approval through a series of readings. So, we have a little bit, I would say, a little bit more detailed mapping here. And when I first looked at this, I thought, what a wonderful RV park there because it looks like everyone's out there on four-wheelers and, you know, side-by-sides ripping through the woods and tearing through all this, you know, sand and hills. And that's probably the case, as each of you talked about that prior to me stepping up here to the podium. So, the request, um, as stated, you see, there is an Exxon station right across the street. And as many of you pointed out, it seems like this has been the site of rural community store, flea market, you know, shrimp by the pound or produce, whatever, on that corner. So, it has functioned actually as a little bit of a community commercial-type corner. We would like to take that, as staff has recommended and recommended you approve, into actual commercial land use and then take the zoning from the R2 and make it comparable with what's across the street here effectively in the C1 zoning. I was looking, because the maps in the application coming from the USGS don't have all that topo, but just for purposes, I will leave the copy of the large-scale map. Yeah, there is a bit of fall across that property, and there's a little hole there. But as shown in the staff's presentation, the position of the store is here in an area where you can kind of balance the cut and the fill. It is a very good sandy site, so drainage and stormwater management will not be a problem. But by placing, you know, a driveway here on the eastern side of the property, because north kind of goes this way, so here's the eastern side, and then out here, you can work with that topo naturally by kind of balancing your cut-and-fill calculations. The high point over here is 130 and the lowest spot is 110. So, there's 20 feet of difference, but in this little bowl area here, what you cut off here, you probably just fill it right in there. So, there, you can probably remain with a balanced, uh, cut-and-fill calculation on site. In accordance with your staff report, we'd greatly appreciate if you followed the staff report and recommend that the County Commission approve CPA 23-000003 and the corresponding rezoning application, I like this one better, 23-000007. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions of the applicant, the agent?
It's not going to make any difference. I just want to know what kind of store you're going to put.
I thought you nailed it right on the head earlier. Probably the most popular store across the Florida peninsula.
It's going to be a long and narrow DG.
Okay. All righty. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak either for or against this particular application? Please come forward and state your name and address, sir.
Madam Chair, once we've heard from this gentleman, I do have a letter of opposition-
Okay.
-from someone with a disability that asked to be able to participate. That's-
Hey, do you have copies for everyone?
Oh, yes, ma'am, I do.
Okay, good.
My name is Bruce Tucker. I live at 103 Main Drive, which is right next door to the, the existing Exxon. My biggest concern is runoff. Um, we, we have a problem with the store now with their elevation. It's all concrete and all the runoff comes down to our property. That, building that up, if you don't, if they don't do the drainage correctly, it's just going to run right into my property again and we're going to have issues. That's one of my biggest issues, telling, I have no problem with the zoning. I just have a problem with the, the water runoff and issues with that. Because now it's a, it's a pit, so I have no problem with the water.
Okay, please come forward and answer that. If you're willing to, how, how will you mitigate that?
Once again, Jerry Didenbach, and in answer to the question and the concern about runoff, you know, Florida statutes and the Water Management District regulations require that post-development runoff not exceed pre-development runoff. So, if he's not receiving anything today because it is an absorbing, sand-filled type area, we, by changing the course of the property, cannot discharge off property. Being that he's here today, that is duly noted in the record. We will make sure our Water Management District permit, you know, ensures that that doesn't happen. And if you see anything that's happening during the course of construction, too, if you see sedimentation or erosion happening during construction, please let us know. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, would you like to speak? Please come forward and state your name and address, and we'll get you to fill out one of those blue cards before you sit down.
Uh, Bruce Tucker II. I actually, the owner of 103 Main Drive. My biggest concern is, uh, how is the lighting going to be? Because it's directly in my front yard right now, and it's bad enough that the store from the gas station, all the light goes into my yard now, and that's why we had to put up a privacy fence. And, um, what about the, the riffraff? Because the store closes down and you have a lot of drug activity, a lot of people sleeping in the parking lots at night, drug activity going on. I'm concerned with that. Now, you're bringing more, you know, business like that. I'm kind of concerned, you know? I have to live here the rest of my life, too, so, and right next door to it.
Okay. Do you want to address the light?
Sure.
Light pollution?
Certainly. Um, again, Jerry Didenbach, CHW Professional Consultants. As far as lighting, most communities, and I will ask your staff to verify this, have ordinances in place that do not allow light trespass or light to leave the edge of the property line in excess of one foot candle. So, there cannot be light cascading off the site into your residential property. Secondly, the stores employ computer-controlled lighting systems, and we use what's called NEMA 4, which is the acronym for National Electrical Manufacturers Association. They have a standard of wall packs and luminaires that actually have apertures in them that make sure that the light stays where it needs to be, on sidewalks, on pedestrian or handicap areas, and not bleeding off the side of the property. Most of the lights, with the exception of security lights, also are shut off at night when the stores close. So, you don't have bright, you know, lights coming off the side of the building or signage that's, uh, broadcasting off the side of the building. I can't promise, but quite frequently, the stores also have closed-circuit cameras that are on there. So, if there is errant activity, you know, in a parking lot, somebody saying, well, I'm tired, you know, I'm driving, I'm going to pull off in the, you know, parking lot of the store and sleep for a while, that's technically trespass because they're on private property. But, um, aside from, you know, law enforcement keeping parking lots empty at night and people not being vagrants or doing illegal activities in the parking lots, that's a little bit beyond the control of us at the point of zoning and land use.
Correct.
But as far as the lighting, that's all things that we can engineer and architecturally design into the site as to not cause trespass and, you know, pollution or light pollution into your property, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against this particular proposal? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the board for discussion and/or motion.
He has to read a letter.
Oh, that's right, you've got to, you've got to read a letter.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So, we received a letter from a Rebecca Marlowe. She owns, uh, an adjacent parcel across the street from the Sunflower Unimproved Road that lies northeast of the subject parcel. Her parcel ID number is 34-09-24-8630-0000-0720. She asked that she be part of the presentation and the, uh, the, the community hearing today because she is ADA-disabled and was unable to, to come in. So, we make provisions to voice her concerns. In an email that she sent today at 3:27 PM, she stated, "Please register my concerns about the negative impact of this zoning change on my property and my desire for additional information before a decision is made by the board. Thank you, Rebecca Marlowe," and she provided her phone number.
Zach, she's, she lives where the vacant part is of this map, correct?
Her postal address is Connecticut, um, but her property, uh, oh, yeah, we're back up, we're back up. So, go back, please. Go back to the site plan. So, that southeast corner of the, uh, of the site plan that you're seeing, right across the street, she's got a .22-acre triangular-shaped parcel. It's got frontage on Main Drive and Orchid, which kind of cuts off and forks.
Point 22 acres, though, she said.
Point 22 acres.
Yep.
She's, you've got her where, where you got your north-south arrow. She's at the bottom of that arrow?
Yeah, if you don't mind, please. She's on the opposite corner.
Of the gas station?
Of the north-south arrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Baker. Mr. Baker, look right here a second. Show me exactly what you're talking about.
Can you see all on the screen that I pulled up? Does it broadcast you?
Yes.
Okay, that's right.
Where do you, where do you-
Where do you got her?
That's what I thought, back there.
Yeah, it's-
Where you got her at now?
Northeast of the property, it's a little-
Oh.
Pizza-shaped parcel that's on, looks like the neighbors are using it to get a driveway across.
So, it's not occupied. There's no residents on that property.
Now, she lives in Connecticut.
Okay.
Yeah.
Appreciate her taking the time to let us know.
We sent her a letter.
At this time, we will take these cases, even though they've been presented separately, we will take them, uh, presented together, we will take them separately. Granted, they are collateral cases, so, but we do need to-
I was going to ask you that question, but-
We, we do need to handle them as separate, separate cases, uh, for the record and to be correct about it. So, I would entertain a motion on CPA 23- blank, 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 two.
I so move on CPA 23-000002.
What do you move?
To, to move, to accept it.
Okay.
Approve it. I'll second it.
I have a proper motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. I'm sorry. I'll call for the vote. It's been a long day. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And now I will entertain a motion for rezoning 23-7.
I make a motion to approve rezoning 23-000007.
Do I have a second?
A second, yeah, go ahead.
Tom got in first. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye. Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate everyone being here today. We appreciate your exercising your civil rights and responsibilities and your civic obligations and taking part in this process. And we trust that you will be good stewards for the neighborhood.
He's got his business card out right now, so he's-
And you're going to talk to them and let them know that you're willing to meet with them and-
If I ever want to come back in good faith, I need to do the right thing every time, right?
That's correct.
Exactly. Absolutely, without question. Is there any old business that needs to come before the board?
You got to approve your minutes, right?
Uh, we're not there yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You used to do this. You want to do it again?
I'm sorry.
Come back. Is there any new business to come before the board? Uh, we do have a meeting in November. It's November the 8th. What are we looking for, looking at as far as caseload that day?
That is a wonderful question. I don't know off the top of my head.
You have let us down.
I would like to thank you for getting the packet out more timely than last time.
I appreciate that, yes.
We really do. Uh, my goal is to still have it out and accessible to the public the day that advertisement goes in the newspaper, but we're getting there. You were a lot closer this time, so thank you very much for doing that.
You know, one thing, we're having a problem getting the packet and the, uh, the information on a computer. The last two months, I did not receive the item, uh, that, the agenda that was posted. And I had to call both months in order to get either Nancy or Jenny to send me an email, at least getting me the agenda, much less the packet. So, whatever our problem is, you have my correct email address because the ladies are able to get in touch with me. But I haven't yet gotten one from, well, it should come out a week before or five days before.
Tom, you might have to make them a priority sender. That's, I had trouble.
Did you?
I had trouble years ago, they'd- I had trouble years ago, they'd send an email, I'd get it all the time, and then all of a sudden I didn't get a meeting and they called, said, "You coming to the meeting today?" I said, "Well, I never got anything." So then I had come in and we had to do something and, well, you had to make it a priority sender, like a favorite or something, that helped a lot.
Whatever can be done.
Zachary sent the new way with the Dropbox, man, that's, I like that, that is simple.
I haven't gotten one yet.
It may be that you have to have Zachary in your contacts list.
Or Jenny or Nancy.
I know, but.
I put all your, all in my contact list now.
It could be going to spam.
No, we checked that.
It's not going to spam or?
When Jenny or when Nancy sends an email, I get it, just like that. They send it, I get it, but I don't get one from the office.
I'll get my seven-year-old granddaughter to come help you out.
If you get the email, you should be able to get.
I swore, we don't understand.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I just wanted to let you know, if you put me back on your list, you got my correct address, but.
In that case, it's very important to be able to mail a copy of the packet to Mr. DeSantis.
Well, we used to do that.
Yes, we did.
But it got expensive and I said, well.
I understand that.
If you can get the packets out early, I can either come by and get one or I can see it. But we have to go back to mail, that's for sure.
Yep.
Thank you, that's all I got to say.
We do have the minutes of the September 13th meeting in your packet. They're rather voluminous, that was a rather lengthy meeting.
I so move to approve the minutes as presented for September 13th.
Mr. Frolic has made a proper motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Chris is seconded, do I hear?
Yeah.
Any discussion about the minutes, any corrections, deletions, additions, whatevers? All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes of September 13th, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? I would like to make one comment, and I'll make this comment again at the next meeting. I was heartily admonished today, and rightfully so, by member of the Board of County Commissioners. Because at our last meeting, we didn't follow the guidelines on how and why to make a motion to accept or deny an application. We based it on the number of people in attendance. Or the person who made the motion based the motion on the number of people in attendance who spoke against something and didn't take into consideration the considerations of the documents that we have in place. Folks, I know our motions run high sometimes and we certainly had a lot of emotion that ran high at that last meeting. But we still have a responsibility to the Land Development Code, the Planning Commission, the Florida statutes, and ultimately to the Board of County Commissioners, to do it right. And I think I will certainly check anything in the future that's based on something as nebulous as the number of people in attendance. Just be aware of that. It's something we need to be careful of. So with that said, this meeting is now adjourned, it's 5:08 PM.